Communities around the country, around the world where people are either stuck in a place or they're trying to get out of a place. These are people that have attracted people to live here, and that's an honor, of course, but it also comes with responsibility. So can we work together to achieve the goals that you set up to do? And obviously, people define goals differently, but we could talk about that. One of them that has come up is, you know, what do we do with this transient occupancy tax that you have? In Park City, we call it the TRT. Here, you call it the transient occupancy tax, but it funds a lot of what you do. And so the question is, whose responsibility is taking care of certain things? And there's no cookbook to that. Again, I've worked with a myriad of resort towns, and I can tell you, they're all facing similar issues. Maybe I mentioned to some of you yesterday that Avalon and Catalina Island is certainly special. It's a very special place. We felt that. My wife is here, my wife Joy and I, the minute we stepped off the boat, but when we got on the boat, it was special just getting over there. But as soon as we got off the boat, we could feel it there. You're very special, but I can tell you this, you're not unique. And I mean by that is lots of communities that have a largely visitor-based economies are facing exactly the same issues that you are. Everything from the, you know, housing situation, everything to attracting workers who can afford to live in the places that they take care of, to the school systems, to the drought or to the rain. Or like when we left Park City and I just, our son sent us a video last night, there's still two feet of snow in Park City at the end of April. People are sick of snow right now. And so just, you ever sick of snow? Yeah, you get real sick of snow, just like you get sick of a lot of things. But so these are, so your problems are not unique. And the reason I mention that is because these places, these special towns, communities, are bubbles. And we tend to encase ourselves in them. That's why we moved to them, quite frankly, they're special. You're an island, and so literally, you're separated. But even the towns like Park City, which is, you know, only 35 minutes away from Salt Lake with a million and a half people, we're a bubble. And when you live in a bubble, it doesn't take long before hubris to set in, and suddenly you, you start to think that you're the only ones that have issues, and you're the only ones that can solve them, and that maybe other people elsewhere are not as smart as you are, and so forth and so on. And I could tell you that it's just a natural feeling that we see everywhere. So it's good to hear what other communities are doing to try to solve the same issues that you're facing with now. I can also tell you straight out that most of them are not solving the issues, they're struggling with the issues. We're all struggling with the same issues, and the solutions are not easy, and we can talk about that, but you can bring some of that up. So things like, how do we fund what we, what we're doing here? And who really pays? Who bears the burden? What other critical infrastructure do we need to progress? Is our infrastructure keeping up with the need of what we're attracting here or for living here? So there's a natural tension always between the residents and the visitors, the long-term residents and the short-term residents, the older residents and those who still need to earn a living, who don't have money from elsewhere. It's become much more pronounced in many of the towns that I deal with. So you look at a place like Jackson Hole. Jackson Hole has the largest disparity in the country, in the world probably, between the permanent residents now, who earn 90% of their income from outside sources, not from the local economy, and the people who have to work there and take care of that economy, the tourism economy. So the discrepancy is very pronounced in a lot of these places, and it's becoming more pronounced. So questions came up like, what are the city and chamber doing with their shares of the TOT funds? Maybe people don't understand how, what you're doing with it. Are we wasting it? Are we spending, misappropriating it? I don't know. From talking to all of you, I don't get that sense at all, but apparently, that's in the ether out there, that these are questions that need to be asked. And then, how do we facilitate the whole idea of sustainability? I prepared a show after I hear from you a little bit, showing you what we've done in terms of starting down the path of sustainability, sustainable tourism. And I think it'd be interesting to you, just as an example. But I'll mention right out, we're always starting on the path, and I have no guarantees here that it's going to work. But I can tell you this, we all have bought into the idea that it's the right path to take. That we have bought in on. Whether we're successful, time will tell. So we like to grapple with issues like water scarcity now. I don't know, some of you read the papers, maybe outside of California and all. And one of the big issues in Utah is the Great Salt Lake is drying up. I mean, who would have ever thought? But the truth of the matter is, the Great Salt Lake used to be five times the size it is now in historic, prehistoric times. It covered most of the western United States. So it's been drying up for about three million years. So it's not new, but it's been drying up at a significantly increased rate in the last 10 years. And in the last 20 years, we've seen a big drought in the West, even despite this huge snow year this year. And so, you know, how do we handle things like that? How are we handling affordable housing or obtainable housing, or you could call it a workforce housing? I've heard every, every word used for it, you know? What's attainable in Park City? I remember working in Aspen 35 years ago, and they were giving housing, workforce housing to the surgeons at their hospital, who were making $250,000 a year, who couldn't afford to live in their community. But they needed orthopedic surgeons. For any of you who've been the skiers, that's a big thing. And so they needed that. And so those people qualified for workforce housing. We all laughed at that 30 years ago, you know? No one's laughing now. No one's laughing if you can't recruit people to, to work for the city. And you go, is everyone going to commute over on, on the express every morning? Well, some people, maybe some, certain people can. Is everyone going to work at home from somewhere else? Certain people can, but you know, when you need people on site, you better have them on site. And we're facing it too. Only two of our fire department, which is not a volunteer fire department, it's a full-on 120-member fire department, live in the community. Where do they come from? What happens when the bell rings and there's an emergency? So we're facing it. And finally, there, you know, is tourism seen as a plus? Is it a threat? Do you really understand the cascading effects of what you do with tourism? How is it paying for itself? How is it not paying for itself? These are all questions I guess you have to answer. So at that, I just wanted to give that as kind of an overview of what I think I heard. If any of you that I spoke with or didn't speak with yesterday think there's other things that should be on the table and we should be discussed, probably now's a good time to bring them up, so. And if you want to correct me if I tried to put words in your mouth, I'm sorry. I deleted the things that I should have deleted when you said, this is off the record. But, but I did write them down, and I have your name next to them, so we understand how that's going to work.
Well, I don't hear anybody wanting to add more. There's a lot on our plate right here today. So unless anybody has any comments. Do you have somebody in the back?
Did you discuss congestion?
Did I, with, with any of the people here? I heard that, you know, that occasionally there's, I mean, the idea, we have what we call Carmageddon, which is, and it's interesting because we're the, I'm just going to use some examples from Park City. We're the largest ski complex in North America, Park City. We have the two major players in the ski industry, Vail Resorts and Alterra Ski Resort, which owns, but between all of them, the, the two of those big companies, they own about 50% of the world skiing right now. So it's a, you know, we, it's a big company. You have a big company here, we have big companies too. And, but they work together. We all work together with them. But when they empty, you know, at the end of the ski day, we have Carmageddon. You know, it's just like thousands of people coming off the slope, and you could say, well, let's spread that out. And we've tried everything to spread it out. But usually, that includes alcohol. And spreading it out with, giving people alcohol before they drive is not the best way of spreading it out. All you've done is you create the downstream problem. So it's difficult to spread out, and our infrastructure certainly doesn't handle it on the road. So yeah, we're dealing with it every day. When I, when I come here, I look at it and say, well, now I'm here to, at an off-season, I understand that. So I don't see the problem. But you as a local, I take it, do see that problem here. I can't answer, but that's, that's a question you'll have to answer, especially as you boost tourism perhaps. How do people get around? I see the carts and so forth, and I assume a lot of people think those are toys when they get them, and you know, like bumper cars, they think it's a Disneyland ride. So I don't know, that's something for, for all of you to discuss, if anyone wants to bring it up. But I didn't, I didn't hear about that issue. I didn't mean to make you all mute here. Don't be afraid to speak. I don't think you are, are you?
Do we want to go into discussion?
Well, that's what I mean, yeah. Is there some discussion that you want to have? I just.
Someone wants to kick off discussion?
Well, one of the things we were talking about with the traffic congestion was Jim and several of us up here, we, the city, we're working together to make it more walkable for visitors when they come to the island and locals as well. So a jumping off point for that would be directional signage, so with information on those about how far it is, you are here, and to get to here, it's going to take you this many miles, this many steps, this many minutes, whatever kind of translates into your head as to whether it's going to be a difficult walk or not. And more visible maps as to the layout of the city, so you know you can go from here to there and do all this kind of stuff. So encourage more walking and trying to get the locals even to, like, like I drive my car when I work at Edison out to Pebly Beach, I drive my car out there just for time sake, but it's parked out there, you know, I come in for lunch or whatever, blah, blah, blah. And the only other time I use my car is when I do my major grocery shopping. So if other people could do that, that would be great. It always kills me when I see people walking their dogs in their golf cart. It's like, come on, that's a form of exercise, and it's, it's, it's a valued thing for people to actually move. And I understand that there are people that do have limitations, and that's why they do it. But there's a dependency on, on the golf carts among the locals, which needs to lessen for health and congestion and all kinds of reasons. So we do have that dialogue going with the chamber and the city and trying to go there. And I know Jim's got some things in the works, so that has been addressed.
Start it.
Start it. So, okay, so let's go back to the top item on the list to begin with, because that's more in general to kind of guide us, I think, as we continue to go and grow. And again, like I said, this is, this meeting today is the first step in improving that mutual respect and communication. I know that, you know, Dave goes to the meetings, but it, and that's to the meetings, and then you go, right? But the rest of us aren't, I guess, because I'm a member of the chamber, I guess I could go more often, but I figure you guys are all handling things, so I don't go. But so again, I think this is a great starting point. I don't know if I should say things, are there, are there any elephants in the room that need to be dealt with to, to clear things up? If anybody's feeling there is a lack of respect or communication?
So one of the things that I've noticed in my tenure on the chamber, and it seems to, around election time, always get more popular, is there's a segment of the community that would like to reduce funding or completely defund the chamber. And it's a, it's, it's always been an interesting concept, and I think in, in some of my attempts to be transparent and also from a protective standpoint, tried to explain why Love Catalina is so important to this town. But one of the things that excited me when Dave approached Jim and I about this meeting was the idea that if we're working independently at odds with each other, we're going to get a whole lot less done than if we work together. And the reality is, without a vote of the people, neither of us are going away. So if we can find a, a way to work together and to have that dialogue instead of be defensive, because in reality, right, when, if you guys come to us and ask us for help, then in helping you, if your attempt is to try to reduce our funding or eliminate our funding, helping you would help get rid of us. And that's, when, when you come at life from a defensive standpoint, you're not going to get a lot done because you're instead, you're under duress and you're just trying to stay alive and justify your existence rather than actually do something meaningful. So that, I think, was the thing that excited me the most about this. And, and when Miles asked me what the, the takeaways would be, what he would, I would consider to be a success from this meeting, the fact that we're all here is it's a huge success. So.
And just to throw my two cents in, if we were to defund you, that just hurts us, because that stops our marketing dollars from being used over there to bring visitors to the island. So we're, we're in this together, and I think we need to find that common ground and not be so defensive to the two different organizations. It's been a tough six years, but I'm, yeah. I have to see both sides, being both on the council and a board member, but, and I think I try the best I can to do that. But I always work with, if you guys don't exist, then we're not going to be able to sell this island. So, so to me, defunding the chamber or Love Catalina is, and, and I think the community needs to understand it's not the chamber, it's our tourist organization. There are tourism that brings people here. The chamber itself, a conglomeration of business people meeting together, that's different than the marketing part of this and bringing people over here. We all, but we, we all just use the chamber, but it's Love Catalina. So I just, I think we need to really work on educating the community that, that that's what we are. It's not business people just looking out for themselves, it's the Tourism Authority looking at bringing people over here to help all these people make money and to, for us to survive.
And I, I think there may be some miscommunication in the community that somehow the business community does not want the city to be in a positive financial position. And that's certainly not the case. But one of the, affordable housing is obviously one of the things that's come up, and there's been conversation about the possibility of removing funds from that and porting it into affordable housing. And the reality is, there's, there's very few businesses you'll go to on earth that would take money out of marketing and put it into infrastructure. It's just, it's just, it's just not generally how business works, but, and, and especially when all you do is tourism, we don't, we don't produce anything else. Taking away from tourism is only going to hurt you more. The, the amount of reinvestment that you get from the money that is spent through Love Catalina that goes back into the city coffers is orders of magnitude higher than what it puts in. So I, I think if we can get to a place where we can work together instead of against each other, it'll be huge. And I think if we can have collective dialogue where we have a united front, that we can do some really amazing things, that the city is never, the fact that this is the very first time that this has ever happened to my knowledge, it just absolutely amazes me. And I think it's something that should happen, not necessarily regularly, but from time to time, so that the two entities can continue to collaborate and come up with ideas. I'm fortunate to work for a guy that has about $100 million ideas a day, and every once in a while, one of those million-dollar ideas comes to fruition. So I, if we can put some ideas together, and I think the, the couple of concepts that have been laid out are sustainable tourism and holiday lighting. If we can start in those two places, I think we can really make some headway. I'll stop talking because there's other people.
Well, and let's go back to the premise of, okay, from what I understand, there, there was a document that was found a while back that said that the chamber and the city should work together in coming up with projects. Correct me if I'm wrong. And that is what I think is some of the impetus to this, as well as the comments on the street about trying to defund, you know, or take away some of the TOT. And I, I can't speak for the group, I personally am not in favor of, of getting rid of the TOT. And I want to make another positive comment that I appreciate what Jim does when he comes every year, and now that you're coming, you know, you give us your audit, you tell us what you're doing. That stuff is available to the community, and I get really frustrated when they come to me and na, 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 when they don't know, or they're saying, oh, can you give me that report? Well, it's either online or you can go to the, go to your office and you can get copies of reports and that kind of thing. So I know that you're doing your darndest to be transparent, and thank you for another little newsletter he's coming up with. But, you know, as we know in this small town, as in Park City, if people want to bitch and moan about something, they can, they can do that and not know the facts. And again, I can't talk to marketing and technology because that's not my forte at all, but I know that you all are very capable of explaining, and a lot of other people understand it a lot better than I. So I could just, when they say, why this form of advertisement, you all can respond to that, you understand that. So that's excellent. So, so, okay, again. So I think that's the impetus for this meeting, are those two things, basically. And so knowing that those are there and now gone, at least we know that once a year, we'll be meeting to figure out what we do with money every year. But I think maybe something, either two times a year might be helpful or whatever, just to keep the communication open. But, so if we don't, if we want to talk more about that, fine. If not, we can, I mean, do you think we're, we're solving number one and two? Or we're, I think.
Well, it sounds good. This sounds like the love boat. Yeah, that sounds real good.
Dave, did you want to say something?
I, I did, just, you know, as, as still a relatively newcomer, I just want to kind of put my, my views on this. When I first started with the city and then started joining the chamber, there was, I noticed a common theme in dialogue in the chamber was that it was very, there seemed to be a, a large degree of defensiveness. And that defensiveness was directed towards the city and about this, this idea of taking back the percentage of the TOT. And I, my view on it was that I think that that, whatever butting of the heads there was, is that the, the city and the TO, or the city and the chamber share the same dollar. And my guess would be if, if you ask the, the city, you know, where does that stand? The city says, well, we give the chamber 22% of what we collect. If you ask the chamber, they'd say, well, we give the city 78% of what we bring here. And I think that's where the, the rub is, right? Because neither the city nor, if we bring, if a million visitors come here a year, it's not because the chamber brings a million. If the chamber went away, we wouldn't go to zero. If the city stopped doing things, we wouldn't go to zero. There's been people that have been coming here generationally that will continue to come here, that don't come here because of either one of us. So there is a number there, there is a percentage of that visitors that the chamber brings and the city brings, but it, it has to work together, and I think it does. But I have told Jim and I've told other people, from the day I've been here, nobody on council has ever come to me and said, listen, we have to come up with a platform to reduce what we give the chamber. That's, hasn't been an issue. But yet, it's often brought up at chamber meetings like it's a real issue. And city council couldn't do that. They would have to go back to the ballot. So, you know, this idea that the, the city council's working behind the scenes to do this is not real, but it seems to be a real issue beyond, you know, including people, you know, that are part of the chamber that should know, and including people that are part of the city that should know that that's not going on. But it seems to be a common conversation. I'm not sure how to stop that conversation, because I think it's corrosive to both sides.
And I think some of that stems from, from COVID. It was, you know, I got to be CFO during that time period, and, and we were having conversations on whether or not we could keep Jim, and whether we could keep Love Catalina as an entity. And in the process of doing that, we were having questions about whether or not the city was going to be able to provide TOT funding. And, and those conversations started sparking other conversations that had been preliminary conversations. One of them for us was the Tourism Business Improvement District. And the original purpose of that was to add additional funding, and then it became such a scarce resource in finances that we looked at it as an attempt to sort of decouple ourselves from the TOT funds that were brought in from the city. And then in the midst of us trying to get that Tourism Business Improvement District formed, the city then put a measure on the ballot to increase the TOT by 1% and not give any of that allocation to Love Catalina. And both of those measures failed. It's like, come on, what are we doing, guys? Like that, in my mind, it's like we just wasted all of our time. We spent months and months and months, and tens of thousands of dollars putting all of that together, because we thought for sure that somebody was going to come after our money. And, and at that point, somebody, people had brought it up as, as a real possibility. And then in the midst of us trying to do that, we, we lost both of those opportunities. And it's a real shame, and, and I hope that at some point, we can restart that dialogue in a way that's meaningful and in a way that is fair and respectful to the hotel and vacation rental companies. But it, it kind of seems like we've all just been shooting from the hip, and, and we're not getting anywhere when we do it that way.
But I also think, I think you should mention that before the last election, there was talk, Dave, that a candidate was wanting to defund the chamber, and that's what started this. So before the last election, we all got word from the chamber that somebody was promoting, I believe there's even still video of it, that says they were going to do what they can to defund the chamber. So it did start at the last election.
But again, it can't be done without going to the ballot, right? We all know that.
Right. We all agree.
Now, we still have to, we have to act against threats. Right, and so that's, it's, during COVID, we kind of all got used to acting against threats as they came, because our lives sort of became this constant threat, especially in the world of healthcare. We kind of got used to putting out fires every single second. So for us, when we hear things like that, we obviously want to address and respond to it and put ourselves in a position to defend our budget, because that's, if we don't have budget, we're all just volunteers sitting around a table.
Well, it seems like there's some kind of agreement here that moving together is going to help at this point, right?
Yes, yes.
Because I know how easy it is to go down the rabbit holes of these things, and we've all been through it at one time or another, and then you go, oh my God, where have we been here? But it seems like at least as part of this initial inaugural meeting, there's a concurrence, at least I'm looking around, nobody's scowling or hiding under the desks.
You have a comment from the audience behind you?
Yes. Waiting patiently.
No, I didn't, I didn't want to interrupt you. Hi, I like this side, by the way. I want to, I wanted to come up and just say that when I was elected to the city council eight, nine years ago, it was, it was ugly for the relationship between a new council member and the chamber and whatnot. And, and it was so much so that I either had to resign my position on the chamber board, which I was the CFO at the time, or be on the city council. And so through the last eight years, it, it has been extraordinarily uncomfortable with the council, and myself included as part of that council, it has been uncomfortable. I'm a little bit embarrassed that I never thought to bring both parties together when I was sitting in a seat of capacity, but I really appreciate the honesty that you have put forward, Bryce, in really laying it out and, and really putting out there the comments that have been made, and also Nicole with your comment that, yeah, I mean, elections can get nasty everywhere and anywhere, and people use whatever they can to get into the seat, whether they believe in that or not. But hearing from you today, Mayor Marshall, that you are not interested in taking away funding from the chamber, I'm so thankful to hear that, because it's actually the first time that I've heard it since you and I all these years worked together.
I don't think you've ever heard me say, I didn't, I didn't want, I wanted to take their money away.
Yeah, no, I haven't heard it. And so that's why I'm, I'm just calling out that this is such a beautiful moment in time for us, because even at the chamber level, the board members don't always agree with each other, and, and that's part of being a board, that's part of having all of these, these people in positions, and the same is for the council. You're not always going to agree on everything, but for me now, on this side. But for me now on this side of it, my businesses rely heavily on the chamber and the marketing dollars. And I'm very supportive of everything that they do and I would really love that this truly be this moment where everybody says, what's happened in the past has happened. Let's, let's not bring it back to the council level at any time, discussions of taking funding away. Let's just go out there and do our jobs and let the chamber do what they need to do and the city council, you guys go do what you need to do and, and let us move forward without all of this negativity that's been there for all these years. So to your point, David, you may not have heard things since you've been here or been witness to council members saying anything for all those years prior, at least since I've been on, since I was on the council for eight years, it was ugly. So kudos to you guys for all being here. Thank you.
And, and not to say, again, when I talk about education and people, if they really want to hear what's going on and, and really get the skinny, then they would understand. Not to say that there aren't still people out there, you know? That's not, I can't speak for the council to say, none of them might ever bring it up from this perspective, I know how I feel, but there's still the community out there that if they wanted to do such a thing and put it all about it, they have the perfect right to do that. So it's, so again, all the education we can do and trying to get those, some of those folks to really understand what's going on could be very helpful.
And if I could quickly, I don't, I don't discount the history at all. I, I understand it. And Jim, I don't, can't remember five, six months you and I got together and just said, can you and I at least agree going forward and come up with a plan that, you know, if we work together and say, whatever happened, happened, let's move forward. And, and we've done that. And out of that, I think, you know, some of the conversations we've had is why is there this undercurrent of maybe cutting back the funding of the chamber? And I think, we think that a lot of that is because that number has grown from, you know, four, 500,000 to 1.9 million, okay? And that's great because that means more money is being spent here, but the money going to the chamber has grown significantly. At some point, somebody, you know, the current is, it's too much money. So what Jim and I talked about is it's, it's clear the city has responsibility for streets and safety and fire and the chamber has responsibility for marketing, but where are the, where's this middle area that maybe we can get together on that benefit both of us and maybe spend some, rather than have this conversation about clawing it back, of spending it jointly.
Right.
And, and I think Jim and I have had great conversations and it's on the agenda today. Kind of the fruits of, of those conversations. So I think that that's a huge solve to this issue between the splitting of the money is that we're going to, you know, recognize expenditures on an annual basis, maybe that benefit both groups.
And so if I may, I'd like to speak to Nicole's comment and Cindy's kind of on the other side. So I'm assuming you were talking about me, about defunding the chamber when I was running. But of course, I mean, I've lived here for 28 years and people talk to me all the time and I finally decided to run for council. And that was a huge thing with a lot of people. And I'm new to this whole game and all of that stuff. And so I was like, yeah, I will look into this for you. I will get to the bottom of this for you. Cause 22%, I was like, wow, that is, that is a lot and I will look into it. And so when I, when I did get elected and I did have meetings with Dave, I mean, that's exactly the kind of thing that we were talking about and Annie and the whole council and everything. And it's like, there's that thing in the clause in there that says, you know, they have to spend their money on marketing and stuff and any other thing that the council asks them to do. So it's like, okay, well, that's a cool thing. So, you know, that whole, I never was like, ah, the chamber sucks and I want to get rid of them. I was, you know, I was not meaning to come off that way if everybody felt that way. And I know Jim was kind of huh with me and, but Bryce and I had conversations and all that kind of stuff. So it is a mutual understanding and a mutual relationship that we do have to have, which I absolutely agree. But, you know, so I just wanted to clear that up if people were still kind of harboring and I know the hospital kind of. I'm just all about transparency and.
No, and Mary, I think you're actually right and thank you for acknowledging that. And I think you've learned more what the chamber does now that you are on the city council and we appreciate that. I think you should also note, the chamber said many calls after your live thing, went live on Facebook at your party, that people were very disappointed that they had already voted and mailed in their vote for you. And then they're hearing that you wanted to defund the chamber like before the election. So just so you know, the chamber, the hospital, a lot of people were quite upset that that all came out. I'm pretty sure it was the night before, maybe it was a couple of weeks.
It was the night before.
And so, so a lot because people were very upset that they had already voted and now we voted for you and what you have a chance of wanting to get rid of the hospital, wanting to get rid of the chamber. And that was a lot of calls that the board didn't receive. So you and I have never had that conversation, so I'm really glad we got this chance to have this conversation. But I think it's more important that you're learning what we do and appreciate what we're doing. We're, we're here to support all the small businesses in this town and make sure we are all successful. I wish we all had budgets like Catalina did for us and the other company, but we don't. And we need that money that Love Catalina can set up and at work with all of us. So I thank you for taking the time and meeting with all of us and learning more what we do because we are here to support the city, to bring more money, to bring more tourists because that's what we need and we need the tourists. Infrastructure is very important too. So I do agree with that, Dave.
Right. So meaningful dialogue, I never heard from anyone. Nobody from the chamber or the hospital contacted me and said, what the heck? You know, did you really mean that or what did you mean by that or anything? But so.
I did.
What?
I did, on both counts. And, and tried to do it in a respectful way. I think the, I think one of the valuable things that's already come out of this is that what we say, especially in a public forum, does matter. And so that, without digressing too much into the past, because I think part of today is a clean slate for the whole world, is, is if we can all just be careful with our words and I'll do the same because there have been times when I've been heated and, or staunch on a position and not, not chose my words wisely. But I, I think the fact that you were willing to learn is important and the fact that all of you have been willing to learn. And, and I, I think that one of the challenges has been, you know, too much money. That's, I, I love that you said that because how much is too much money? The only person that understands Jim's budget is Jim because Jim will give you a two-hour dialogue on his budget, right? But outside of that, we do our best to understand it, but we don't, we're not the ones actually doing the marketing. The only one that actually would be qualified, there's a couple on that side of the room. But the rest of us all, we're just making sure that he's not stealing stuff. We leave the, we leave the expertise to the experts, right?
He's taking a pen.
But I, I think if.
Well, as the mayor and I discussed yesterday, just briefly, you know, she has to represent all the constituencies in, in your community. And I've always admired mayors to, you know, to try to navigate those dangerous waters because the hardest thing to explain to people is when right is not enough. So like if you talk to people who maybe have lived here a long, long time, 30 years, 28 years, 50, and they look at it and say, you know, I'm retired, I have a pension, I don't really need all these people coming in here. You're right. You don't. I, no, I'm not saying you, but I mean, just, I happen to fit into that category myself now. I'm at that age that, you know, yeah, I don't need all those people coming in there, but I understand why they're there. Now, you also represent as the mayor, a young couple who just bought into a business and has a mortgage and is trying to put their kids to school. And they say, I need these tourists coming in here. That's how I make a life here. And I'm, we don't want to be like an old age community here, you know? And a lot of our communities are turning into that. A lot of our communities are turning into semi gated, they're economically gated communities because the prices have gone up so quickly. And we're all trying to combat that because what happens after a while, when you look around and you go, oh my God, this is like, this looks like a retirement home and it lacks the vitality that you really want in a community. So you have to represent those people and they're right. And trying to explain that you're right and you're right, how could you both be right? That's right. How can you both be right? Everyone's right. So when right is not enough, what do you do? You compromise. That's where you are. So I think you're all recognizing that, you know, like when you run, I've, I've worked with a lot, a lot of council people and mayors and it's the old saying, you know, that people run for office in poetry and then they have to govern in prose. And so the difference, you know, the, the gap, I mean, I love when people have to serve at least two or three terms so that they starting to know where all the skeletons are buried, but how things really work and where the money does come from and how they put it together. So it sounds like there's pretty broad commitment at least to be open to talk to each other. And, and so we can, if that's okay, unless someone else says, it sounds like you aired that one pretty well.
Yeah.
We're all on sort of the kumbaya part now. That's good. Okay.
And I will, real quick, I will acknowledge there, I'm sure there is a huge contingent of the community, not huge, but a contingent of the community that is, does not understand or does not want what the chamber does to happen. And the only thing I'd ask is help us win their hearts and minds because we're trying. We're doing everything we can. Help, be an ally to us in that quest to help educate them so that they can be an ally as well.
So what I heard on, and then the next bullet point down, and I think that's what you were talking about, Dave and, and Jim, was this idea of how can we show that tourism not only has to be marketed, but it has to be managed? And what does that mean? So that has really gained some, some currency over the last five to 10 years, but especially in the last five years and especially with the accelerant of COVID, which really has, has taken trends that were already in place and just turned them into a conflagration in all of the communities I'm familiar with. Because they've all become not only great places to visit, they've become great places to hide out in when things look scary on the outside. So a lot of our towns that were, you know, sort of casually going along and accepting tourists, suddenly found all those tourists were starting to live there and they were our residents now and they had a different perception as residents than they did as tourists or resident, as visitors. So we're all grappling with that. We think, we see it cooling down now. We see it as a blip that is changing now. So what happened for maybe one or two years seems to be going in a different direction. I know that we closed down in COVID in March 15th. We had one more, this was in 2020. We had one more week of the ski season. They closed down everything instantly and we told everyone that they had to leave town who was, who didn't live there. I mean, basically they were given eviction notices to leave town. How strange was that? And we, and we all had emergency meetings with our council too. And we said, we have to go in the triage. For those of you in the hospital and healthcare business, you know, what are we going to do? And, you know, we're going to dry up and, and die here. And then we had the best summer we ever had. And it was totally unexpected, a total shock. Our revenues went up by 25%. Everyone said, how did that happen? It was just that. We became a refugee camp. And all, and you know, as I said, I checked with a lot of the towns, especially the ski towns, they all faced the same thing. Anyone who owned a second home or a timeshare or something, they beat it because they could still go outside and use their resources. And what's the bigger resource than the conservancy up here? You know, if you want to get out of it and away from other people, well, you could do it up there and you'd never be seen again. So I'm just giving you some perspective on that.
But the interesting thing you also shared with me is that you only closed down for two weeks. The weeks were closed down for how long?
Right.
And they were freaking out after two weeks.
Right.
And here we were going for a year and a half or however long.
Well, and that brings up the point that, because people always, and I've seen this happen in my career a number of times. And I'm sure Kathy Miller's seen it and some of the others have seen it. Dave has probably seen it too. There have been times in the past where communities have said, oh, let's defund the chamber, let's stop them. You know, it's an easy, it's an easy target. It's an easy target. You know, if we just stop advertising, people will stop coming. But as Dave said, people came here before you were advertising too. Or, well, no, Rigley's advertised, but people would come here anyhow, but not at the numbers probably you have now. Our own experience, my own experience watching that is they live to regret it. They live to regret it. And I, I was kidding, I think with one of you yesterday, I said, anytime you want to close down and not fund anything, you just tell me, because I'll put a sign up at the end of your pier, say, you know, Catalina's closed, try Park City. That'd be the cheapest advertising I could ever do, you know? We'll give you a voucher on the boat to go back. So it's very hard to regain those people, very hard to regain them. And, and we've seen it happen. Sometimes it takes 20 years to regain the trust of the people who, you know, you say, well, we're so pretty here, we're so special. All these places are special. They're all pretty, that's why I would say you're special, but you're not unique. There are a lot of beautiful towns, small towns that are marketing, that are thriving and, yeah, you do have to market. Okay, that's, that's enough. I don't know what happened to the slideshow, but again, I lost it here somewhere. Is there any?
Yeah, we'll bring it back up. Jamie, if we can bring the slides back up.
Would you want me to continue or do you want to discuss? I, I don't mean to.
I think we got over the distrust and all of that.
So I, I didn't know, I know that the big thing that, that you also talked about was this working together on this funding. And I don't know if, if Jim or Dave want to talk about that a little bit more or if that's sort of a given at this point.
I mean, I think it's on the agenda for the three o'clock meeting, right?
Yeah.
So it was an attempt again to work together and put your money where your mouth is. As I said, Ben Franklin, hope and do something about it. So, okay. So what I was going to do at this point, if that's okay, and I could just do it from I know one of the issues that, that comes up a lot is, is the idea of sustainability. This has been a big issue, especially in the major ski towns, but it's an issue worldwide. So for those of you who follow tourism, not just here in the United States, it's a huge issue in places like Venice, in Barcelona, in Machu Picchu, in any of these areas that get a huge number of tourists. The whole idea of how much is too many tourists or how do we manage tourism? And sometimes we, we go to simple answers. For instance, if you come into this auditorium, and I'm sure there's a sign somewhere, maybe there is or maybe not. Usually there's, there's a sign on the wall that says, you know, maximum occupancy, you know, 150 people by order of the fire marshal. That's who, that's who determines it. That's your carrying capacity. Why? Based on the number of exits, based on the bathrooms maybe, based on safety required. And we all accept that. We don't argue with that. We say, yeah, there's only so many people you could get in here. Towns have a much harder time doing that. Number one, we're a democracy. Number two, we're poorers for the most part. We're not all gated. You know, if you have a gate, yeah, close the gate and say, no one else could come in here. But generally we're not that way and we don't believe we should be that way. You know, that's not in our DNA as a country to close people out. So the question, but there is a carrying capacity. You can only fit so many people in a place. How do you determine that? We're all struggling with that. I can tell you in the ski industry, way back, and I started with those folks in the ski industry in 1972, so it's 51 years. The ski industry would talk about comfortable carrying capacity on the slopes. And they would measure, the engineers, ski engineers, a company called Snow Engineering, they would measure the width of the slope and the width of the run, the, the amount of people you could carry on a chair lift up. Dear Valley was the first one to enter that equation and they said, how many restaurant seats do we have so that when you're there for the day, you could sit down and eat lunch? You know? So there's different ways you can measure that. Certainly health and safety generally come first. So you look at it and say, well, how can we evacuate? If there's a tsunami, what do we do? If there's a, a fire, what do we do? And we've all seen what happens in California and Colorado with the droughts. We've seen the floods, we've seen the slides. So these are all factors that we're considering nowadays. None of us has a complete answer on it, but it's a question. How do we define comfortable carrying capacity? Some of it's psychological, you know? There's comfortable to you is not comfortable to me. The question came up of, of traffic. You know, I look around here and I say, there's no traffic. People who move to Park City from Los Angeles and they hear us say, Cormac Gett, and they laugh. and they hear us say Carmageddon, they laugh. It's Carmageddon. It's not even, that's not even anything what you have here. But to us, it was like, "Oh, my God. So much traffic and you can't get around." But, you know, so it's psychological. So let me just talk a little bit about this and maybe that'll help the discussion. Maybe you won't. You tell me if it doesn't. This is Park City, for those of you who haven't been there. We're the second largest silver strike in the United States, second only to the Comstock load in California and in Nevada. And so for 100 years, silver mining. Silver mining was king. So we didn't go from a tourist town to a tourist town, like you have here in a way. We went from a mining town to a tourist town. You want to talk about a transition of psychic proportions? You can imagine that the miners. But the interesting thing was, it was the mining company that put the ski lifts in. Why? Because the mining industry failed. Silver was devalued. And they either were going to leave or they, you know, in the 1890s and 1900s, these miners were like Silicon Valley. These were like the height of technology. They had dug 2,000 miles of tunnel in hard rock under our town, going down 2,000 feet. And those tunnels are still there, you know? So their motto was, "If we could dig that, we could put a bunch of fat butts on the mountain." So they put in the first ski lifts, interestingly enough. So they embraced it as a way to stay alive. And the answer there is, everyone needs an economy. Whether, we were talking yesterday, whether it's the automobile, whether it's tourism, whether it's mining, whether it's high tech, everybody needs something to keep you alive. Otherwise, what do you do? You know, you can retire. You're a retirement community. You can do that, I guess. So this is our downtown. We are a national historic district. The whole downtown is a national historic district. So I like to point this out because people always say, "What's the, what's the, what's the idea of success? How do you measure success?" Well, I measure success like this. I measure it by the depth of community. And community is really a contraction of two words, common unity. And that's what you're talking about here today. Are you all in this together or you're not all in this together? I can assure you, whether you're in it together or not in it together, the problems, the issues will still be there. Just because you're not agreeing doesn't mean the issues go away. It just means you're miserable while the issues are still there. But if you can agree, those places that agree and form the relationships, like you're talking about here, those places are the most successful. Because issues tend to resolve when you know each other and you compromise. You say, "We could work this out." So I'll just point that out to you. I know there's, a lot of the towns fall into this. They, they look at their problems and desire to hire consultants. Now, I can't say anything bad about consultants since I made a living doing that. And someone told me early on that, you know, a consultant does nothing more than bar your watch to tell you what time it is. And I thought that was pretty clever. But when I first did one of my first consulting gigs 50 years ago, and someone said, "Do you know what a consultant is?" I said, "No." And then he said, "Well, it's a man who knows 10,000 ways to make love, but doesn't know any women." So I thought there was some truth to that, you know? Because generally, people will get hired and they'll just tell you what you already know. So I'm not saying you shouldn't hire people who know more than you, and a lot of them do. But often, people do it just because they don't want to confront the issues that they have. And I can tell you from talking to you guys that you already have the skills to confront all the issues you have. You don't need anyone to tell you differently. You might need people like myself to give you more perspective on what other people are doing. But you know, you know, what your issues are. So you don't have to admire their problem. Some of you talked about this too. Fretting is not effective for affecting, you know, for fostering positive change. So by fretting about something, complaining, backbitting, all that, it doesn't get you anywhere in the long run or even the short run, really. This is a picture that was taken many, many years ago by my friend. That's actually Dennis Connors. Do you remember Dennis Connors? This was here taken in San Diego when they were practicing for America's Cup. And I always liked this picture because I don't know if they were going in the right direction, but I can tell you this, they're all going in the same direction. All right? And that is something important that a lot of us have learned, especially when it comes to sustainable tourism. And the reason I put it in here now is we are all in this together. And I think you all recognize that as well. Our chamber faced with very similar situation. People in our community say, "What are you doing? Are you spending money marketing? Are you doing this? Are you helping us? What are you doing here?" They said, "You know, we have to change the nature of the discussion. We have to reframe the discussion." And that's where the whole idea of sustainable tourism or sustainability. I love this slide because I'm in it. But we did a lot of this because I, I and the rest of our community helped put on the 2002 Winter Olympics. And because I worked with it for 13 years, putting that together, dealing with the naysayers, dealing with the yaysayers, dealing with all the issues that we had, we finally just all came together and said, "We're going to put this on and we're going to have a great time." And we did. And I got to run the torch, which I thought was pretty cool. And I thought I'd show you that too because I'm still proud of that. Our organization, our chamber organization is very similar to yours in the sense that we have both a chamber and a convention and visitor bureau. So I'm not going to dwell on any of these slides. But Jim has my slideshow. You have the slideshow. And a lot of this is in this sustainability. I don't know if you brought that with us today. There is a sustainability plan that our chamber has put together. I said ex officio on the board. I don't vote. But I've been sitting here so long, they think I own the place. But this is the tourism plan they put together. All of this is in there. And you'll see at the end of the show, there's a, what do you call that code?
QR code.
QR codes. Yeah, so that you could hold your phone up and you could download it instantly. Or if not, we can get you copies of that. So this just talks about, you know, the local focus and the destination focus as well. And we are part of an association, an accredited association that's worldwide of destination marketing organizations and sustainability organizations. And so, you know, we like to put out there and tell people what the mission is and what the vision is. Then a mission and vision are different. So we try to put that out there. So again, some of you mentioned sustainability, yes. But you also mentioned visibility. Are we transparent? There's nothing hidden here. There's no, there's no secret handshake. Everything is out in the open. And this is what we do and this is what we're trying to do. You might not like the vision. You might not like our mission. But at least we're telling you what we're doing here. And we're showing you how we're trying to do and what destination and marketing and management means. Again, I won't spend the time to go through all this with you, but I'm just giving you an example of what's in this plan in case you yourselves want to delve into it more. One of the first things, and this gets to what I think Bryce was talking about. And I told Bryce, our son is named Bryce as well. I have an instant affinity there. My wife and I argue about how we got that name. We live in Utah. I thought we were naming it after Bryce Canyon because I originally wanted to name him Grand, but someone thought that was a little pretentious. So Bryce, Bryce is what we stuck with. But my wife says, "No, we didn't name him after the canyon." Anyhow, it's a $1 billion industry it is. I mean, we've done all the economic studies. When I say that, we hired the University of Utah. There's a big center there, a big economic center. We, we contract with them every year to give us accurate numbers. And you can look at all their numbers. We didn't make these up. It's not, you know? So we try to really say, "Here's what we're doing here." It generates 14,000 jobs in our community. And it pays for a lot of the quality of life amenities that we have. Now, I'm saying that as a city employee. I've been a city employee. Now I'm just on contract with them. But never, you know, never paid for by the chamber. Well, they give me a T-shirt once in a while. So, you know, 60 to 75%, and sometimes that's a little squirrely, of our city services really come from the visitors. They give us a quality of life that none of us could afford who live there. We are benefiting from that industry. So we have, you know, some strange laws in Utah. Liquor laws are strange. But some of the other laws are strange, well. And, but, you know, tourism really helps us. Really helps us. And, you know, you have to ask yourself, if you didn't have the tourism, I mean, would you have the restaurants? Would you have the amenities? Would you have some of the things you take for granted now? And yeah, they're crowded when it's crowded here. But there's last night, we went in places, it wasn't crowded and we had a great time. So, you know, I don't know what to say about that. But I think you know all this. And we had that in great detail. We also talk about our long-range goals as a chamber. And, you know, we list them there. And again, these are all clear for everyone to see. Now, I can tell you, and I think you all know this as well. And I think I mentioned to someone yesterday too. The first thing I always tell new chamber members or new city council members is, "Don't you, as an elected official or you as a chamber board member, believe the BS we put in our brochures." Right? We never put a picture in our brochure of Carmageddon, ever. We never put in a picture of 50 fishermen at the river in Orvis fishing gear, all fishing for the two fishers still in there. You know, it's always the one picture with the grandkid and Bambi's in the background. The sun is setting. I mean, that's what we sell. That's, that's the nature of marketing. That's, we sell a dream. People are coming to our places to get away from their ordinary lives. That's fine, as long as we don't believe it ourselves. I mean, we know what it takes to make it work. We're the back of the house. And we try to remind people of that. So we are really putting an emphasis on marketing, which we still want to do and have to do. Our transient room tax, your TOT, is earmarked toward marketing. That's state law. That's state law. We've, over time, gotten the state to, like here, maybe, to expand that a little bit to say, "Okay, not only do you market, but you also have to manage some of the impacts." And that's where it gets, there's no, there's no cookbook on that. Every community I've worked with that's dealing with this has a different formula or a different outlook on how you do that. That's what you try to do now with the lighting idea. And you all have to negotiate that. That's just trusting each other and working together. So we try to really understand and try to explain to people. And sometimes, we never get through. There are people who just don't like what the city does. Some people don't like what the chamber does. More than a few people don't like what either of us do. Some people don't like me. I understand that. You know, that's just the nature of the beast. But we try to, for those who want to listen, we say, "Do you understand what this economy does? How our decisions cascade and affect different elements? If we do this, what does that mean downstream? What does that mean a year from now? Six months from now?" I can tell you this. Those communities that sort of try to defund their chamber, just like we saw defund the police. Remember that? Within a year or two, those council are voted out. I can tell you. I watched it over and over again. So I know what I'm speaking about. So we try to show things about occupancy, visitor days. It's the same thing maybe you talk about with, with the cruise ship industry, with people coming over with their marketing. We try to show, are we in relative balance? Are we getting out of balance with our rooms, with our hotels? So we're always talking about that comfortable carrying capacity again. And just like they say, you never build a church for Easter Sunday or for Christmas. Right? You can't. You can't handle every situation. I mean, the infrastructure, you can't afford to do that. And so, you know, there are times when it's Fourth of July here. It's crazy. Okay? If you don't like crazy, come to see Park City. I don't know, go to the mainland, go stay home. We said the same thing to people during the Olympics. For years, I was in charge of really the messaging during the Olympics for the community. I was in charge of the speakers bureau. And I would say to people, on February eighth, two thousand and two, we're welcoming the world to Park City and to Utah. If you don't like crowds, we're going to give you a voucher to go on vacation. Don't stay here and complain. It's going to be, you know, not forever, it's eighteen days. Anyhow, this is our tagline. We call Park City "Winter's Favorite Town." And we change our tagline every few years, but, you know, we want people to come. And what do we do there? We recreate. That's what you do. That's what recreate means, recreate. So, there's a spiritual aspect to it. It's more than just taking their money. You always know when you go someplace and all they're doing is taking your money. And you know when you go someplace and it's meaningful. It was very meaningful for Joy and I, my wife and I, to be here and talk to people who live here. It was really meaningful for me yesterday to meet those of you who I met and spent time with, because I got a feel for it. This is like a real place. This is a welcoming place. This is a place that you're all proud to be in. This is an important place. This is a place that you want to protect and you want to share. So, our tagline for the Olympics was, "The world is welcome here." Not everybody wanted to welcome the world, I can assure you. But enough of us did that we made it a meaningful experience. And those who stayed around for the Olympics, and a lot of people did, locals, said it was the best time they ever had. The best time they ever had. And we're going to host the Games again in twenty or twenty, twenty thirty or twenty thirty-four. We're on the agenda again to host them again. I will not be working on it. But I will support it. Okay? So, all of our marketing now is aimed toward sustainability, marketing and sustainability. So, we talk about, you know, how do you, again, how do you act on that pledge? Sustainability is a great bumper sticker. It looks good. It's easy, you know, sustainable, we're all sustainable. It's like we're all green. But what does it really mean? Well, you know, you try to, you try to see, how can you market that? You look at the buzzwords. And like, for instance, we do stuff here, "You're on the right trail." You know, preservation, we try to message it to the people coming that we respect the place we live in and we expect you to, too. You're coming to our living room. If I invite you to my house, I don't expect you to trash my house. I also expect the bathrooms to be clean. Something you have to look at. I just threw that in there. Just in case.
Remember, some of our staff.
Just thought of that. So, you know, we really have tried to reframe the messaging away from, "We have problems." Yes, we have problems, but let's concentrate on solutions. And that's what this joint meeting, this inaugural meeting is about today. I love this quote from H.L. Mencken, for any of you that are history buffs, and he was one of the great satirical writers for the Baltimore Sun in the thirties. And he said, "For every complex problem, there is a simple solution which is invariably wrong." And how true that is. You who are tasked with really making things happen, know how hard it is to make anything happen. It's hard to do. And there's always someone out there who reads in the paper or reads online, "Well, if I was in charge, I would just do this," you know? "Oh, really? Well, why aren't you in charge?" Because, yeah, you won't stand up. It's pretty hard to stand up and lead. It's real easy to talk to other people how they should lead. So, I always like to remind people. And I actually, for the last thirty years, have run the leadership program for our community. So, every year, we train thirty, thirty-five aspiring leaders about the community and what we're doing and how we're doing it. And most of our chamber board, most of our city, our county council, have all been through the program at one time or another. So, it's been a very successful program.
Can I just say something?
Yes, please.
I just want to say thank you for the four of us who actually did stand up and run. Because there are so many people that will complain, and you say, "Come on, get involved," and they don't.
Yeah, they don't.
So, I just want to say kudos to us.
And you standing there.
And yes, yeah, I'm sorry, just standing there.
And especially now, where the atmosphere is so poisoned against people who would run and volunteer their time. I mean, why would we volunteer your time?
But I totally appreciate that comment.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, no, I would never run.
But there's a difference from running and getting elected.
Oh, yeah.
But there's also a thing of being involved and just don't sit there and complain. Come to a meeting and complain, but tell us why and examples, because you can do all the complaining back here, nothing's going to get fixed.
Absolutely.
If the people up here don't know about it. So, yeah.
Good comment, thank you.
I was just going to actually add thank you to the board for the chamber, for Love Catalina. It's, the number of people who are apathetic in this town is frustrating almost every day to me. And the fact that you guys are willing to give your time and show up for events and show up for board meetings and show up to make choices as well is huge. So, it's something that we need more of. I think it's the challenge of not having more community and more full-time residents that could be here and interact in that. So, it feels like it's always the same people showing up for all the things, all the volunteer meetings, all the volunteer events, all the boards, all the everything. So, kudos to all of us in this room right now, even people in the audience, for showing up and having the time and energy to care about the greater community is pretty great.
Yeah, someone once said to me, the two things every leader should do, say, hello, you're welcome, thank you for coming, and two, thank you for being here with us. Giving thanks is pretty important. So, what are we trying to do when we say sustainable tourism? Well, it's not rocket science. Well, maybe it is rocket science. The rocket just blew up today, right? So, it took off, though. That was good. And our sustainability program might do the same thing. We're taking it off. The thing I could tell you about our sustainability program and what we're trying to do is by reframing the discussion, it's a lot like when we decided to do the Olympics. It gave us some common purpose. That's really what it did. Instead of saying this and that and blah, 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 and sniping here and there, because we're susceptible to all the same human variables that you are and most towns are, by talking about sustainable tourism and how we actually implement, instead of fretting about or complaining about it, it gave us a common purpose, say, okay, we did the Olympics, you know, how can we do this? How can we actually implement it? It hasn't been implemented. I mean, we're starting, but it's no guarantee that it'll succeed. I mean, people might look at this five years and then say, what a waste of time and effort and money. We don't know, but we're hoping, but we're doing something about it, too. And that's what I wanted to show you. So, it's this balance. Now, we're not in it alone. And I just put this out there because there is this Global Sustainability Tourism Council. And it's an amazing group of communities from around the world. And I don't know if this is totally up to date. We were the last one there, Summit County, we're Summit County, Utah. And so, we were the last ones at that point. This means we were accredited. We've done the work to be accredited, to show we're on a path that others are also creding. Right? So, again, there's a lot of people. We're not the smartest boba on the tree. Other people around the world are trying to do the very same thing. What's the capacity? How do we make this work? And we're all trying to learn from each other. So, that's the good part. Jim, you have something?
I just wanted to remind everybody, we are members of GSTC, but we are not accredited. And part of why we are not accredited is we lack this sort of documentation to share back to them for that accreditation. One tier.
Yeah, and I'm not sure you have to be accredited. I mean, this is just like, you know, it's nice.
Although it does come up when we're out there in meetings, for example, with some of the cruise lines, like Royal Caribbean, they were very impressed when they found out that we were at least sustaining members and had incorporated some of those best practices into our operations.
So, you know, to satisfy the definition here, I mean, people say, okay, it's a bumper sticker, sustainable tourism. What does it mean? Well, it takes this, what they call it, a holistic and integrative approach, and it includes these objectives here. And, you know, under each of them are strategies and what you're going to do and how you're going to do it. Now, these are all broad categories. So, it's up to each community to tailor fit it to itself. And again, there's nothing, this is just people who have sat down and thought about it and said, how can we wrap our hands around a concept as broad and as amorphous as sustainable tourism? And this is what they came up with. Other people have come up with other things. But this seems to capture kind of a worldwide vision of what it means to be holistic and integrative. And then what you do is, is that, you know, you kind of define it, and there is a definition for what sustainable tourism is. And I have it there. This is from the worldwide group here. And, you know, things like outdoor recreation management, environment heritage, and you could all look at that. And again, you could download this and you can have it yourself and tailor it however you want, or just use it however you want. This is open source. Open source. Okay. And what did we do? So, as we started to talk about it, we spent a whole year, a whole year trying to reframe it with our community. I hope they're not coming for me. I'm in the witness protection program. So, we did all these things. And I say, "We," the chamber led it, but they did it in conjunction with the county and the city and our two major resort partners and the Rotary Club, which I'm a member of, we have two Rotary Clubs, and every other group that they could get involved. And we did exactly this. We did surveys of the residents and the businesses and the visitors. We did focus groups. We did online discussions. It was a very intensive group. And we had fairly good, I mean, for something as, you know, out there as this, fairly good response from everyone to say, yeah, we get it and we're buying into it, like this. We're in this together. I mean, we don't know if it's going to work, but it's the best path we've seen. And these are the focus areas, the quality of life, how are we going to keep the natural environment, very important for the conservancy, obviously, but important for you who live in the square miles, that's the town, the city, you know? The quality of the visitor experience. Sometimes they get lost in this whole thing. But are they having the experience that they're paying for? Is it good value for money? And we hear that a lot now, as prices have gone up, some of our, you know, we're getting blowback. We're seeing it, you know? Oh, my God, costs a little too much to come to Park City. And, you know, we're hearing that, you know? It's a free capitalist society, so everyone could figure that out on their own. But we share that data with people. And the quality, you know, of the economy, how much of our economy is dependent on tourism? What are we doing? So, these are the kinds of things, you know, I'm just throwing those out there. And then, under each one of them, we have actually filled in for ourselves what we're going to do and what it means. And I won't spend a lot of time with this because time is getting short and I want to again end with your discussions on any of this. But on each of these stewardship principles, we have objectives. And those objectives then are outlined, we do a balloon festival, too. Do you do one of those here or somewhere?
We might have too much.
Yeah, actually, the last four years that we've done it, we've done it for a lot of years, but we've had it, we've been weathered out. You know, it's a very tricky deal to do the balloon festival. Anyhow, under each objective, we did certain things. We said, "Short term, midterm, and long term," to show that we're actually putting meat on the bones. You all know this phrase, you know, "Where's the beef?" And that's what people ask us. Is this just talk or is this like action? So, we're going to have accountability to say, are we acting? And each year, we give a report, then, the chamber has to give a report back to all the partners and say, here's where we're acting, here's your responsibility, here's your responsibility and so forth, and are we making progress and are we not making progress? So, again, I won't go through these in any detail, but these are the kinds of things that we're looking at under each objective. And it's really just fleshing out the programs. So, there's seven of them, and again, you'll have this information here. So, it's a lot. There's a lot of work that went into this. But as I learned, and I put this down here, someone told me early on in my career, "The map is not the territory." The map is not the territory. This is a map. This is a plan, is a map. It's saying, here's how we'd like to get from here to there. And then you get out there, or it's the famous boxing thing, like Mike Tyson said, "Everyone is a good boxer until they get hit in the nose," you know? And you get out there, you know, I look at the map and say, oh, I could hike through the conservancy, and then I just drove out there with the tour, and I said, "Oh, my God, this is all straight up and down. I couldn't walk ten steps out here." So, it's true. You know, when I see it on the flat screen, oh, that's no problem, you know? That's only a couple of miles wrong. So, we're all looking for not killing the goose that laid the golden egg, because it's given us a great quality of life. And that's sort of where we want to be with the whole thing. So, we've tried to present this, and the reframing part of it, as a challenge, you know, for all of us to adapt to the change. We know it's not the same, Park City's not the same as it was thirty and forty and fifty years ago. We understand that. Of course, my wife and I could buy a house and build a house there, you know, forty, almost forty years ago for like $250,000, which are now selling for four and a half or five million dollars. Do I feel bad that I made a good investment at that time? No. But do I understand that I, now, starting out where I was then, couldn't afford to move to Park City? I feel bad about that. I do. So, but what's our obligation? I don't know. I mean, we live in a society that measures things by, you know, what you earn and what you can spend, and then what's our compassion? How can we help those who we want in our community who can't afford that? That's where the government and the chamber and other groups come in to see if you can sort of bridge that gap some. Well, like, some of you have always seen this famous quote by Reinhold Niebuhr, and I think it still bears some looking at, about, you know, granting me the serenity to accept the things I can't change and the courage to change the things I can and to know the difference. And there is a difference between those. So, I like to end up, at least what I would have to say by what I've seen, you know? If you're lucky enough to live here, you're lucky enough, you know? And you should really look at it, because if you'd like to live somewhere else, let me know where. I want to buy there first before you get there. So, at that point, you know, I think maybe we should, again, discuss any things you saw me present or that you still want to talk about. And Jim, there might be things that you want to raise, or Dave, you might want to raise to the boards.
I have a question.
Yes. Oh, the gallery.
And if you might, wait, I'm sorry, and if you might either come to the mic or you repeat the comment, Miles.
How did, I think, in the past two years, how has the community embraced it?
So, the question was, how has our community in Park City embraced this sustainability plan that's put up there? I think, again, I think people recognize it as the beginning of the dialogue, just like you're having here. It's not the end product. We've been very honest to say, it's very ambitious. We don't know if it'll all work. We don't know where it'll fall down, and we won't be successful. But I think we have gotten agreement, again, that we're in this together and this is a pathway that's worth pursuing. So, right now, we're only a year into it. We just sort of got it out there. It's been accepted, it's been formally accepted. The city accepted it in a formal resolution. The county accepted it in a formal resolution. The chamber has accepted it as a formal study. So, they have all committed formally in votes on paper that this is the way we're marching together. You could follow us, you know, maybe you'll see us fail. I don't know.
How much money did it cost and how much time?
It costs, again, I can't answer that precisely. I can tell you that the chamber hired a director of sustainability as a chamber board, as a chamber staff member to shepherd this through. She came on when this had already been started. Our chamber director, and Jim knows her well, was, came from Sedona, where she had done some of this work. The former chamber director, someone who Kathy knows and someone who I know, our job, and I kid about this, but it's true, our job for, from the time I was hired to help Park City become a tourist destination. So, I had low-hanging fruit for most of my career. My job, along with the chamber director, was, let's put butts in beds. Pretty simple, you know? It sounds simple now, because, you know, everyone says, oh, you were way too successful. Well, you know, we were lucky. But we were successful, too. We did it. We did it. It's harder now. This is not low-hanging fruit. These are the hard issues. How do you deal with affordable housing? How do you deal with traffic? How do you deal with pollution? Everything costs a lot more. Unlike you, you have how many acres of the conservancy there?
Forty-two thousand.
Forty-two thousand. In Park City, there was no public land around the city. So, unlike most of the other ski resorts in California and in Colorado, which are surrounded by Forest Service or BLM, we had no public land because it was all a mining district. So, everything around us was subdivided into five and 10-acre mining claims. I spent twenty-five years assembling mining claims and land claims to buy open space for the city so that we would create an open space mode, so we looked like a tourist destination. We have spent, through bond issues, over $100 million over thirty years doing that. Is it successful? Yes. Do we have a nice area of open space around us? Yes. And guess what? People yell at us now, all we've done is create an exclusive enclave of rich people because no one can afford to live within the zone. Cascading effects. We didn't even consider that, you know? We said, we're doing the right thing. We're saving open space and all that. And now, not only that, we actually have to take care of the open space. And let me tell you, it's, suddenly, I have a lot of respect for ranchers with guns. It's hard to take care of open space. People like abuse it. So, you know, it's just interesting to see all those things. How much it costs, I couldn't exactly say, but it was not inexpensive. So, you have to, you know, you have to be willing, that's what I'm saying. You might be able to just take a lot of what's already been done and modify it. Yeah, again, I'm not, you know, we just felt that we had to make a real effort to get it, especially in light of the fact that we were bidding to host another Olympics. We like the Olympics. So, that's.
How long it took?
To do this? A year. A year. Now, again, the lady who came as our chamber director had already done some of this. So, she was up and running. Jim knows her, you can answer that, too, maybe.
Well, I can't address for how long it took, but, yeah, they were fortunate that they got a new director who was way out ahead of the game when she was in Sedona. She was way at the forefront of leading this kind of conversation, to the point that it may have harmed her career.
Yes.
Actually, I mean, you know.
We rescued her from there.
Yeah, there were members of that community who didn't think they needed to be that careful with their environment, so.
It's always dangerous to be five years ahead of your time.
Yeah. I just also wanted to point out, I mean, not only do we have this example from Park City, but the Global Sustainable Tourism Council provides basically an outline that you can render from. So, it's, I mean.
Yeah, I'm really showing you their work. I didn't really do any of this, but I'm good at talking about it.
So, I think one of the things that we're hoping to have come out of this conversation is to try and coordinate an effort like this would really take everyone working together because it would require a vote of the council to direct staff to work with Jim, who we would have to direct as the chamber board, to work together, try to put together that plan. And without those votes in place happening simultaneously, basically, it wouldn't happen. And Jim has said that there is funding, not just for Love Catalina, but also funding for the city that has, is now, the state of California is now attaching requirements to that money to have a sustainability plan. So, in trying to, one of the things that was on one of those slides was finding the right visitor. And I would never want to exclude anybody from coming here. But at the same time, from a marketing standpoint, we want to market to the visitors that come and produce the least amount of waste and are safe and careful in our town and give us lots of money. That's ideally, if you can have less visitors that make us more money and do less harm to the environment and to us, the better, right? And so, being able to take a look and study this would not only be a great opportunity for us to focus our marketing efforts, but at the same time, open up doors to grants that we would regularly not be able to have without that plan in place.
And along those lines, there is an emerging segment, I guess I'd call it, of travel-making decisions that are filtering or making their final decision based on impacts. You know, maybe I am going to be carbon-heavy to go to an island, by the nature of it being an island. Do some of my dollars go back to that community in a way that helps to offset that or sustain that place or better that place?
And we know that's the direction that the state of California is headed, Amanda could probably write a book about it. So, if, I don't know if there's interest in both parties in moving in that direction, but I.
I think it makes sense to look at the pricing, see if we want to look at it for this year's budget even possibly if we can. And get me back to council to see if we can move forward with it.
And the good news is a lot of work has been done, and I bet all these other cities around the world have their, well, probably in foreign languages, but they, they all have these sustainability plans in place. So there's a lot of stuff out there.
One of the things that has been really interesting in my own learning process along this, when I look at some of those places, though, is they are so particular to their place. I mean, if you, if, we have bison that, you know...
Oh, right.
...roam our hills. There are other places that have tigers and elephants. And, and so, you know, you, you start reading their plans and what's important to them. And preservation of species in much of the world is right at the top of, of what they see as their biggest need.
But it's all good stuff to help. I mean, talk about a boilerplate, even with yours, you know? That's a huge boilerplate that they've got together, you know, gotten together and, which is awesome. Oh, cool. So just, I think we're supposed to get out of here about three o'clock, and I don't mean to cut you off, but when, when you had that agenda and talked about the money for the lighting or whatever, is that a conversation that has to be done here or that's going to be done at three o'clock?
That's going to be done at three o'clock during the chamber meeting.
Yeah, that's, that's asking our board to support the, the effort that's been brought to us by the city financially.
Can I ask a question on that, though?
Sure.
Just while we have it.
Yes.
Is the city paying for some of that, too? Or is the whole load going to the chamber?
That's not the whole load.
Okay.
That number.
That's all just there.
Yeah.
And you guys agree with this lighting? Um, I know Mary was on with the, uh, little, our little board or little meeting that we were doing. Are you guys okay with what, um, we looked at and kind of all approved? I, I know we took it from what Dave said, but were you guys okay with what we picked? I guess.
Oh, I think that's, I think that's a great start.
Okay. I, I just wanted to get a little bit of the top on it, just because we were bringing up the bottom.
Yeah. I mean, it's a priority, it's definitely a priority to us. It's, it's beneficial to the, the residents of Avalon as well as the visitors. It's, and deals with the safety that you're talking about as well as the ambiance. So I think it covers a lot of things that are on your little list over here.
And if we wanted to make, too, like some of it, we decided to be blue and white instead of the red and white, just because the blue and white would go to the content and we were kind of covering everybody's religious spots and all that. That may be, but again, just wanted to make sure you guys, you know, are with over...
Sure. David Hart and Dave Maestro, sir, because we haven't been involved, at least I haven't, in the little might, nuts and bolts, but if y'all are comfortable, I'm good.
And I feel with my time here with the mayor and the council, uh, diversity and inclusion is a big thing with all of us, so, yeah.
I don't, I think this is wonderful, first start. I think everybody's going to agree. It's like hallelujah to every one of us. And to Miles, thank you so very much. It's, it's been fantastic. And it was just good getting that shit off the table, right? I mean, that was the biggest part of this, is clearing off the... Tim, smile when I say that word. That was a smirk. But anyway, um, and Miles isn't offended because he spoke with me yesterday. So anyway, thank you. This is great. I'm looking forward to the next one, whenever we decide that should be or however, ever that's decided, and, um...
Mayor, may I say one more thing?
Oh, please. Oh, yes.
So you quickly referenced, um, we've provided the first-ever version of a quarterly one sheet. This is for the first quarter of the year, where we did our best to capture in a snapshot what we do, how we do it, in, in a, in a quick down and dirty. If you have any feedback or something you feel is not there, this is version one, episode one, whatever you want to call it. Um, so we are happy to continue to evolve it and grow it. This grew out of a conversation the mayor and I had after one of our mixers. And so we look forward to providing this not only to you at council, but to our board and general membership on an ongoing basis. And we hope that it will have at least occasionally, if not always, a video companion so that some of these things can, can quickly be clicked on and, and shown to the world. Um, and I believe it was your goal, Mayor, to, to have me actually come quarterly, either during public comments or as an agenda item, and, and walk through it in more detail than I am today.
Okay, that's great. The other thing is, can we put this on a city website as well?
Yes.
Yeah. And I don't know how many copies of this you made. I mean, there are some of these that I would just like to have and just hand out to people.
Well, we brought about, well, we brought about thirty some, so that means there's probably ten back.
Okay.
If I look up here, there's probably ten with, but we can print more like that.